Okay, I'd like to call the March tenth, two thousand and fifteen Sherborn School Committee meeting to order at six thirty. I'd like to welcome you on, all here, and so we can start the meeting like nothing has changed, but I think most of you know something has changed, and I'm sure we'll have a lot more to say about that later, but our superintendent has let us know that he will be leaving at the end of the year, which we're glad for him for whatever he chooses to do, and sort of sad for ourselves.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Hess.
But we appreciate you being here, and we will work him hard for the rest of the year, I'm sure.
(laughing) I never doubted that. Thank you. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. So, community comments. Any community comments? Okay, hearing done. The CSA updates, Mr. Embry, Mr. Welch, and before you start, just like to thank Mr. Embry for jumping into the fray and getting into the political process in running for school committee.
Sure. Well, make sure. I look forward to your support in May. (laughing) Thank you, Mr. Hess. Good evening, everyone. February's a busy month for the CSA. We gave our bus drivers and custodians a surprise thank you coffee break and lunch respectively for the tireless efforts to keep our kids safe. We planned to do this before the break, but we had to postpone it because of the weather. It sounded like it was well-received. So, it was fun to do. CSA raffle baskets were a huge success, raising over five thousand dollars, thanks to Kelly Ducci, Lorelei Renda, Kerry Martin, and her team for a fantastic job creating more than thirty baskets. The CSA auction, Saturday, May second, five thirty to ten P.M. We'll be broadcasting the Derby at six twenty-four, and the online auction is set to go live April third. So, of course, we're still looking for auction donations for either the live event or for the online. The CSA is planning our book fair for the end of May, the last few days of the month, just after the weekend, I think it's the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, twenty-eighth, the Wednesday, Thursday, Friday is, I think is the...
Tuesday.
Oh, thank you. Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, so the last week of the month. Great opportunity to purchase summer reading lists items for both your kids and yourself. We'll be looking to get lists from the teachers to help with the selections in advance.
Excuse me, sir. Did you say that was the end of May or the end of April?
Sorry, end of May.
End of May.
Thanks for clarifying. Finally, June twenty fifteen will mark the end of term for several of our board positions. Our recruiting is underway. The president, fundraising, treasurer, and volunteer positions will all be transitioning next year. So, Dave and I are completing our two-year tender as co-presidents of CSA. So, we'll still fill out the, round out the year and get through the auction. So, we've enjoyed it so far and the board for the last few months. That's all from the CSA for this evening. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for the two of you, all your hard work and efforts.
No, you're welcome. It's time we'll spend.
Okay, next we have the Pine Hill update. Dr. Brown?
Well, most educationally relevant was Pyjama Day on Monday. Our students are ever creative and decided they could save time after springing ahead and losing an hour. So, we had school-wide Pyjama Day. It was festive and fun. The K through two teachers, grades K through two, met with Frank and I and Heather McKay, who is our English Language Arts Curriculum Rep, last week, and we had a weigh-in with regard to implementation of our new word study program, Foundations, which is spelling, phonics, and a little bit of handwriting reinforcement, and some vocabulary instruction. And overall, we are super pleased with the result and the continue to anticipate with result with the consistency K-two, which has been needed. We certainly identified a few areas we will supplement in the, particularly in the early phonemic awareness learning experiences, and we have a solid recommendation to move forward next year. We had our last school committee just three instructional weeks ago because of February vacation four weeks ago, and I was amazed when I sat and reflected at how much professional development has gone on just in the last fifteen or so school days since we last met. Lots of inquiry going on with staff. Today, we spent our one-hour faculty meeting, working in small groups on topics of interest and/or what I call kind of fixture, attack your pet peeve and fix it. So, we have folks working on everything from topic development and making recommendations on everything from the placement process, how we, in a well-balanced manner, group students from year to year, classroom placement, to refining our, some of our scheduling, opportunities to exercise kids early in the morning and better facilitate our arrival to school process, looking at efficient and effective ways to group students who need specialized services across classrooms, and our staff was very engaged in many topics of interest this afternoon in a collaborative manner. We're continuing our work with Claire and Tammy, our literacy consultants from Teachers for Teachers. We have four more visits to round out the commitment we made this school year, and we are working on, I would say we're at the hard part, the messy part. It was great last year when we were talking conceptually about how to shift instructional practices, and now we're at the place where teachers are receiving individual or paired-up coaching, and it's valuable, but it's at that, the place where the work is hard because it's really, we're really, we're really working to shift our practices and look more cohesively at student learning. So, that is a big nutshell of what is going on. I mentioned our new student council has been elected, and something super exciting are the fifth-grade citizenship projects that will be shown at the fifth-grade open house, and lots of, lots of really civic-minded activities going on, particularly in fifth grade. So, thank you.
Kate Walton. Okay, Mr. Bliss?
Good evening, Sherborn School Committee. Good evening, Mr. Hess. Hope everyone is doing well. In addition to profusely thanking the CSA for everything they do for, and for the benefit of Pine Hill, we also want to thank and recognize DSCF and all those folks in the town of Sherborne who contributed to the Phone-A-Thon over the past month or so. It happened to be that a lot of the calling occurred on snow nights, nights when we had inclement weather, so we noticed a huge uptick in donations this year. Some parents saying, "How much do I have to give to have school tomorrow to ensure that my kids aren't home?" But certainly, we look forward to going through all of the DSCF grant applications, the four schools, plus there are some grants that are regional, and then there are some that are K through twelve, total about a hundred and forty-two thousand dollars or so, I think, to the moment, something in that ballpark, Amy. So, we look forward to going through all those with the board, DSCF. In addition, we have the Business Manager Search well underway. Many thanks to Mrs. Hanlon for continuing to give so much time to that search process. It's vital, and we have six individuals that we've invited to interview, and we conducted two interviews today, and we have four interviews early next week. So, we are optimistic that we'll be able to find a successor to Ms. Tagg from that pool. We shall see. And then the Business Office Associate position, we received thirty-four applications for that position, and that just closed at the very end of February. So, we're in the process of moving forward with an appointment for that position as well. So, that's, that's the position that was really fundamentally dedicated to the region. It was an accounts payable position really for the region that now has been sort of rebranded into a Business Office Associate position. So, we want to make sure you're updated on that. The MECO grant reductions, there's sort of the good, the bad, and the ugly of this, that the bad and the ugly is that the current year's grant was cut to the tune of fifteen thousand dollars, and we've indicated here in what areas and which districts. The good news is that Governor Baker's initial pass on his fiscal sixteen budget pledges a restoration of MECO money for sixteen. So, while there's nothing we can really do about fifteen other than try to make up those receipts, we are cautiously optimistic about next year with respect to the MECO program. So, that's good news. All districts across the Commonwealth, in light of the number of storms we had this year, were given the option of either kind of sticking to the original MCAS test schedule for the spring or going to an alternate model, and Pine Hill and Checkering both decided to stick with the original testing schedule for the spring, and both the middle school and high school decided to go with the alternate schedule. But that was one thing where our district configuration worked to our advantage because Pine Hill is a standalone district. Pine Hill could make its decision. Checkering could make its own decision, and the region could make a decision not withstanding each others. So, that was helpful there. I think we'll speak a little bit probably, Mr. Hess, onto subcommittees maybe to the capital projects, if that's your pleasure.
Sure.
Okay. And then, we are taking some initial reviews of some of the elements of the governor's budget. It literally just came out last, on the fourth, I think, last week. So, there seems to be some pretty favorable indication around chapter seventy monies for next year. But again, it's so early. The budget certainly is way far away from being approved, but there is a proposed two-point-three-nine percent increase to chapter seventy monies for next year. But, you know, I wouldn't, I couldn't, wouldn't go running to the bank just yet on that. So, just some news on the food service front. We are going to move forward, we've talked about for the past couple of months, we're going to move forward with converting over the POS management system to make sure that that's up and running and ready for the opening of school next year. So, that's a conversion that the person who's in the temporary Business Office Associate position right now will begin working with Ms. Madden and Ms. Tagg to initiate that process so that we have that well in place for the opening of next school year. The other items, the challenge success, we had last Friday night a very strong turnout on the challenge success program, and the initiatives are underway there, too. And last night, we had a major turnout for Chemical Health Night at the region, which was, now it's going to be a requirement actually of students at the region who will play in the Interschool Athletic Program, and so we had nearing six hundred people or so in the auditorium last night for the Chemical Health Night presentation. So, it's parents and student athletes.
Mandatory.
It was mandatory, yeah. So, it was a packed house.
That's why you had such great attendance, I think.
But it wasn't a great, yep. And moving forward, it will be mandatory. It's something that we hope to, you know, continue to have every year. The Internet Safety Night is March twenty-sixth, and there's an update for you on the NEASC accreditation process, if that's of interest to you, as it pertains to the region. So, that's it on our front.
When will, do you have an idea when your reaccreditation by the high schools is determined?
So, we actually applied for a postponement of the self-study process. This last March, the date of order, I think, was March second, two thousand and fourteen, we wrote a letter to Janet Allison and indicated that we just have together a lot of other districts, a lot of frustration around the self-study process as it relates to accreditation. Not only is it about a year's commitment of a huge, as you know, Mr. Hook, about a committee of several people for about a year, but it's also about a thirty-five thousand dollar financial commitment to be reaccredited. And the assertion that Dover Sherborne made, as well as many other districts, we signed on to a letter that was sent to NEASC saying, "We're just not really sure that the juice is worth the squeeze," quite honestly, because there are so many standards that we're held accountable to, and to tie up a committee of people for a year and to pay thirty, thirty-five thousand dollars. So, the regional school committee is having discussion around whether, whether accreditation is something that is something we want to continue to, to need, want, move in the direction of. Certainly not near a decision, I wouldn't say. However, five years ago, the regional school committee did decide to move away from accrediting the middle school, and it has had no impact, you know, on us, obviously. But, so, we did sign on to a letter basically asking NEASC to please come up with some way to make this more palatable, more manageable, the self-study process, and hopefully to link it up with some of the initiatives that many districts are already engaged with, and not have it be something completely on top of our already lofty set of goals. So, we were in very good company with, I think about twenty-six districts or so that signed on to this letter saying, you know, "We are asking for the commission to come up with something." So, they published these two documents that are intended to be what they're calling like crosswalks between their current standards and a lot of what we're already working on. And I'm not sure when a decision will be made, but we're hoping that we can come to an agreement so that this doesn't tie us up for a whole year. We're very concerned about the impact on college placement, obviously, for accreditation purposes. So, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Ledoux?
The new, in the educator evaluation system, one component is the staff and student feedback on teaching and learning, and DS is piloting two modules, one from tripod and one from the state model surveys. So, we're in the process of evaluating those two surveys of students giving feedback about staff. It's educators who come forward and say, "I'd like to receive that feedback." That feedback is kept confidential to those educators for this year. In our pilot year, we are also piloting the staff feedback on administrators, too. And so, we'll be working through that and getting some data about teaching and learning in that regard. So, I think it's a well-placed use of our resources to be able to determine what is the best vehicle, because next year it should go online as a requirement as part of the educator evaluation system.
Excuse me, what levels are going to do that? What grade levels?
Actually, grades three through twelve, and it varies. K to two eventually would probably just be an interview of students conducted, but I don't think it's been fully developed yet.
Okay.
So, it's grades three through twelve. So, students could be participating in that. Once a month, I do walkthroughs. It's my pleasure to come to Pine Hill at least once a month, and I try to come more often, and Dr. Brown and I will walk through. And we're actually looking at classroom engagement, what's the curriculum, what are some instructional strategies we see, what, how's the overall classroom functioning, and where might we find the application for professional development? And just recently did some walkthroughs and saw some of the teachers using graphic organizers to synthesize ideas, and that aligns to goal five, goal one, and looking at some instructional approaches to academic and social learning. Actually saw an educator doing some executive functioning in a classroom, one educator incorporating movement in order to transition first graders. It was so well-crafted, I thought, wow. And everybody in the room was doing it, the big people and the first graders. So, it was really cool.
And Dr. Ledoux's being very gracious on the particular time that we scheduled our visit. We were in at least six classrooms that were having snack.
It was, it was nourishment time.
It validated that we're very well-nourished.
Yeah, nourishment time. And to align to Dr. Brown's comments on her school improvement plan, during the early release days, elementary educators reviewed the newly-aligned technology literacy standards and aligned them by grade level, K to five, with specific standards outlined for students in the areas of, where can I find it, computers and applications, ethical and safety issues, and using electronic media, using technology for research, critical thinking, problem-solving. And a core group came together, they identified those standards by grade level that the classroom teacher will apply, and then we worked with Ms. Papatopoulos and who's our K-12 district technology coordinator, and Mr. Otako, who's the director of technology, to think about how that's applied and what tools are needed for teachers to implement that. They, what was great about it was that they're saying to themselves, "We already do all of this. Let's just codify it." So, it's something that's written on a piece of paper now, and we shared it both our elementary schools, so there's unification across the two schools, and it speaks to the technology plan supplement, which you've reviewed. So, it's a measurable outcome of some of the ideas there, but also to Dr. Brown's school improvement plan. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Screen, do you have?
So, I wanted to give everyone an update on the Special Education Parent Survey. It has been completed in conjunction with the CPAC group, and they, they vetted that, oh, please tell me to move. So, it was vetted through that group, and we worked together to put together a survey that met some of the needs of CPAC, some of the things they wanted to know, as well as getting a feel for what parents' impressions of our first year and the reorganization, what their impressions are. So, the survey was completed, and it actually was sent to all in, parents of in-district and out-of-district special ed students on Friday afternoon, and by Monday morning, we'd already gotten fifty-four responses as of today. I think we're up to sixty-three responses, which is a, is a pretty good response, having been sent out to just over two hundred parents or so, two hundred and fifty parents. So, we're looking forward very much to seeing the results of those surveys and sharing those with the school committees so that we can get a sense of parent, how parents are feeling about the reorganization. And our, the next step for me now is to construct a staff survey to get some impressions from our staff on what this first year of the reorganization has looked like for them. So, we'll be doing that next and before the school year is out so that we can get that information as well.
Okay. Will that be shared with?
It will. All of the results will, will be shared with you. I'm expecting to close the survey by midweek next week, so then I can analyze all of the data from each of the schools and report out to school committees on that, as well as the CPAC groups.
Okay. Thank you very much. Next, we have subcommittees, and some other subcommittees might have some reports, but...
Business manager?
Excuse me?
Business manager.
Oh, Ms. Tagg, excuse me.
Oh, that's okay.
(laughing) I know that you don't want to be missed.
Basically, for this fiscal year, this snow and ice has really created some havoc with all three district budgets. The overtime, obviously, to keep the sidewalks and egress areas clean was required to get the schools open on time. We've also had to pay for a significant amount of salt and sand that we haven't had in the past year. As a result, I see the budget coming in basically, with the exception of legal, the legal settlement account, basically at budget. So, any turnback would come from that legal settlement account. And all other function codes, with the exception of the out-of-district tuition and transportation, that's still coming in at a two-hundred-and-forty-thousand-dollar surplus at this stage. We have the report from CSG coming, the conservation report, on the twelfth of March. And that's it.
Okay. Did we already decide where the, the point of sale for the cafeteria was going to come from in here or not?
Well, I was gonna, because of the fact that we do have a turnback in legal settlements, I was gonna just charge it to the technology software account, because I don't think we're gonna have enough sufficient funds in the food service revolving fund.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you. Okay, now, with capital budget, yesterday, the Capital Budget Committee did vote to support our request for this year.
They did?
Yes. So, so they're gonna put that forward, and advisor already has those, those numbers. And, Mr. Bliss, do you want to review any of the things that are in progress to make that work?
Well, just the, so, a couple points. One is that Mr. Caralucci, we had reported last month that Gino Caralucci had asked us to see if we could get some savings analysis done in terms of payback periods and whatnot on some of these projects that are slated to occur, with the hope that some of the projects could be subsumed within the Green Communities Grant, which would be wonderful. So, in particular, grants related to the UN events, those related to the large air handling units in the library, the two units that are, you know, you sort of always hear humming along in the library when you're in the library at Pine Hill, as well as the SOFIT insulation work. Those three projects have the, there's a potential that those projects could be subsumed within the grant. And as, so we felt like it was a decent investment of money to engage CSG Conservation Services Group to come in and to look at exactly the scope of service involved in those three areas, the air handler, the UN events, and the SOFIT work, because well worth a couple thousand dollars worth of consultation money to have them run some numbers for us. We expect, as Ms. Tagg indicates, we expect that report back on the twelfth, because we have to provide all that to Gino Caralucci for potential incorporation of that within the grant. By the nineteenth or twentieth of March, the grant closes. So, we expect that. CSG has done very well by us, I mean, in terms of being very reasonable, and Greg sits on the committee, and their work product is, is pretty good.
And even if we don't get the grant, that information will help us better to deal with the vendors when we go out to have the work done, right?
Sure. Yeah. Or even, potentially to even know what the payback period is for purposes of town meeting or for the financial fiesta coming up when we have to talk about, you know, our capital projects. It's nice to know that, you know, we're asking for two-hundred-thousand, five-hundred-and-fifty dollars, I think is the magic number, for fiscal sixteen for this district. We're asking for three-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand for the region. So, it's always good to be armed with that information around what's the payback for these projects. So, and then, on February twenty-fourth, we had a meeting with the playground consultant, and Paul Solnier joined us for that meeting, and Ralph, and Barbara, and the consultant, and Sean Killeen was there, and largely because the playground consultant needs to know what sort of the footprint will look like, what does she have to kind of play with, no pun intended, for this area where we intend to have the early childhood playground. So, it was important to bring Paul in, because he's the person working on all the engineering work for the drainage issues for the upper campus, as I affectionately refer to it as, so in and around the building proper. And we expect some, we have all of the documents, we're expecting some actual pricing from Paul fairly soon in terms of whether the drainage we propose within our fiscal sixteen request sort of will be able to be done. With the money we've asked for, will that accomplish the goal of addressing the drainage issues? The larger, not larger, but equally compelling issue is the effect of all of this on the lower field, the lower campus in the Jamison Fields. And I understand, Mr. Hess, you had a conversation with...
Melissa Bowman.
Mrs. Bowman, Melissa Bowman. And do you want to jump in on that, or?
Well, she was concerned what was gonna happen. First of all, in the short term, as far as the spring's concerned, whether we might have to remediate, we're probably gonna have to watch and see what happens when the snow melts. If it rains hard when the snow melts, then, you know, we could have another mess. If it doesn't slowly, like it's been the last few days, then we might be okay. But then, she was saying that if work was going to be done that would require any major work on the field, she'd like it done from the middle of July on, because all their programs seem to run May, June, and the first two or three weeks in July. And after that, they don't use it as much. She was also very much concerned about the baseball field, because that, except for the region, that's the only full-size baseball field in either Dover or Sherborne. So, she didn't want that disturbed during that period of time. And Greg sent a note that, you know, he's had cases where they've been able to use the fields, the region sometimes, although they might be heavily subscribed sometimes, too. But...
Sure, we'll probably be able to get, get the groups onto the regional campus. But I think the other issue is that when we met with Paul on February, the morning of February twenty-fourth on the playground issue, it was thought that the funds being requested herein for fiscal sixteen would really address the upper campus drainage issues and not really address the lower campus issue. So, my fear is that I wouldn't want anyone to think that what's being asked here is going to remedy like the entire campus issue, because that's not, I don't think that's the case.
I understood that a bit differently. I mean, I was thinking that, I know that we couldn't run the pipe to the pond, which we were talking about.
Right.
Which would take it off. But I thought we were talking about redoing some of those pits that were down below, or adding some. And I'm, I'm not sure if that is within the scope of the amount of funds that we have or not.
Well, what we should probably do then, because in that late afternoon email, and Mr. Garland is part of it and whatnot, let's see how Mr. Killeen responds tonight. And then, it probably would be wise for us to pull a Pine Hill Building Committee together, meeting together to just put our, put our heads together on that, because, you know, we want to look at what Paul's coming up with for numbers, because he felt like the number that in the ASCE would, would deal with everything on the upper campus, but may not deal with everything on the lower. So, it's probably, now that we've done more research on that, it's probably a good idea for us to...
Because that's gonna more efficiently deliver the water... Because that's gonna more efficiently deliver the water, the lower area.
Oh, yes.
So, so we might have to, and I did say to her that, you know, if it wasn't enough, we might have to look and make that a two-year project, necessary to...
Right. Because, I mean, we have, as all of you know, we have so much ponding and, and collection of water that goes on, particularly in the area of the, the back playground, that it really makes little sense to have a few, huge infusion of money to have a fantastic playground that will flood. Makes little sense. So, so it was fruitful meeting on the 24th, but let's see what they respond overnight, Mr. House, and then maybe we can put a meeting together?
Okay. Thank you.
That sounds good. Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Brown, you have update on the school improvement plan?
I do, and I'll lift, I'll lift certain features, but please ask questions if I gloss over anything. I'm trying to just expedite everyone's attention and time. In reflecting on our school improvement plan, and we have sort of four overarching goals that we're focused on this year that, that align with and tie into district goals, it was very encouraging to, to spend some time at this two-thirds of the way mark. Report cards go home tomorrow. Many of our benchmarks have been met. Certainly many are ongoing. We've made good headway, but there's always an opportunity for some of the more qualitative kinds of things we're working on to, to continue to go deeper and, 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 at any rate, articulate instructional approaches and opportunities to ensure curricular success for all students. Some of the benchmarks in that area were to implement recommendations generated by the wellness committee, which we're certainly doing as those recommendations are fed to us. Most recently, Superintendent Bliss mentioned that we have extra support in the lunchroom, which is a real tangible assistance to our food program. The challenge success initiative and training going on with our teachers and the thinking we're doing around considering ways to better fortify some of our structures and routines with students, so that we're, we're as balanced as possible, are really, are really bringing good conversation to the table. Something very tangible that we've done, phase one, with regard to parent accessibility to our student information portal. We opened that for elementary parents this year at an informational level, meaning, meaning parents have access to their, their general information about their students. We look forward to opening, continuing, we see this as a, a three-phase process. We'll be ready in the fall to open the report card portal at the elementary level, at least, at least in regards to Pine Hill. As an aside, we are revising our somewhat dated report card, K through five, and looking at, with Dr. Leduke's guidance, looking at reporting on student progress structures that will be contemporary and beneficial to parents' guardians and, and important for teachers. So we'll have the report cards online in the fall, and we're working with the tech department to, to make sure that we're ready for that. We did, benchmark number three, I'm looking at goal number one, we did implement a consistent universal screening tool in our K through two early grades with regard to early literacy and early mathematics. Again, that is a screening tool, it's not a diagnostic battery, but it gives us an opportunity to identify blurring weaknesses that students may need intervention in, and it allows us to measure effective student progress for all students. So we're using the Dibbles, which is out of the University of Oregon, for early literacy and early mathematics. Highlighting some of the work we've been doing, goal number two, continue implementation of the DS Professional Growth and Evaluation System and Administrator's Evaluation Process. I feel like we speak to this a lot in our superintendents' reports from month to month. Again, there's always room for refinement and enhanced communication, but the four benchmarks we've established in that area, we have met through the work of the district and Pine Hill's collaboration with district administration and other schools. Again, I don't want to be redundant, Dr. Leduke has reported on the latest excitement around qualified peer exam, qualified peer observers. And our teachers look forward to engaging in coaching, peer coaching relationships. We know that that job embedded professional development is, is, will, will strengthen teachers' opportunity for reflection and growth. Incidentally, the four educators who are training to be QPOs are, I believe today was course number two, three? In the series? I'm, I'm earlier this week, not today.
It was last Thursday, yeah.
Last Thursday was number two or number one? Number one. They came back riveted. I am sequentially challenged. They came back riveted from the first course and the readings and the discussion, and the opportunity to collaborate, K through 12 was really exciting for. Incidentally, Lori Ryan, Jen Ryan, Rachel Correa, and Heather McKay are the four educators training to be qualified peer observers at Pine Hill School. Lifting, again, some of the work we're doing on our third goal, which is the English Language Arts Curriculum Revision. Again, I feel like I speak a lot to the professional development we're doing behind the scenes with regard to strengthening and aligning our reading and writing instruction across and within grade levels. But let me just report that we, you know, we're certainly working with our consultants, benchmark number one. Benchmark number two is in process grade level teams working to draft, revise, and publish curriculum maps that align with Common Core. We are all buying into the Lucy Cawkins Writing Program. We are, something new this year, on-demand assessments, and I know assessment can sometimes have a negative connotation, but what that means is our teachers are really rounding out and balancing, having children write and demonstrate skills in, in many and ongoing ways throughout units of study, not just these, these cumulative, fully edited writing pieces that we do throughout, throughout the three types of writing. So on-demand assessments, it's starting in kindergarten. And again, that, that sounds, that sounds harsh, but it's, it's ongoing and more frequent interval, looking strategically at children's writing and measuring their growth over time. And of course, we want teachers to use the feedback as they understand it from their students' writing, to design their lessons the next day, the next week, the next month, so that it's, it's relevant to the student, to student work.
Have we seen any growth from the beginning of the school year, or the implementing of this, to where we are now?
Uh, yes.
Compared to last year, you know, same period of time?
We are far more strategic in our instruction around the three types of writing, and some of the, sort of the mini-genres within those types of writing. I, I, where we are working to incorporate best practices based on the research that we're reading, but also what we know about kids. And I would say that the hardest work is at our earliest grade levels, with our kindergarten and first grade teachers figuring out how to incorporate what they've always loved, the kids writing all about books, or how-to books, with more robust informational kinds of writing, you know, per the Common Core that we need to be doing with kids. So we're, we're really wrestling in a healthy, professional way to figure out how to reconcile, you know, well, I loved this project. Well, how does that tie into the larger overarching goal? I think the writing historically has been richer at the upper grade levels, and the expectation now is that we, we're, we're sort of shifting and lifting the, the relevance and rigor at our younger grade levels and, and, again, reconciling what is standards-based, but also that, what, what approaches feel developmentally appropriate to us, so.
I've got a question, Frank, if you don't mind.
Yes. Thank you.
I'm curious how that discussion compares with what's going on at Chicaring. Can, can you, in other words, you know, what's, what's the difference? Are they, everything's set and they're good, and they're not really working on anything? Or, I'm just sort of curious about what the difference is at Chicaring between Pine Hill.
They spent the, the previous year looking at, oh, sorry, thank you. They spent the previous year looking at the, the three types of writing, and are using a different program, but getting this, moving towards the same standard. So while it's, they're not using the Cawkins Writing Units of Study, they're using Empowering Writers, that's fine.
So, but, but, so who makes that decision as to what program is being used?
It, it was actually a local decision. So Pine Hill and Chicaring had made that decision.
Right. But who makes that decision? I mean, we didn't make that decision, is that...
No. The administrator, the administrator's in concert with the teachers in the building.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm just wondering, just thinking of the region, the two districts as a, as a, as one district.
Right.
How...
Should they maybe have the uniform platform?
I'm assuming somebody in the administration ultimately is in charge of that decision, right?
Locally, at each building.
The building is. So they could choose a program, we could choose a program that maybe you would prefer the one that Chicaring is using, but we choose a different one. That could happen?
Yeah. I mean, the, Chicaring's using Empowering Writers and has now for...
This is their second year.
Second year.
The expectation being that we're aligned with the Common Core standards and that the, the learning outcomes for kindergartners, third graders, fifth graders are similar. Where, where, I think we're more similar than dissimilar with Chicaring in that we're approaching our literacy work with hyper-focus. We, we went into our literacy work through reading and then got to writing. Chicaring almost had an opposite paradigm. They went in through writing, and now they're looking at their reading practices and the reciprocity between reading and writing, which is...
And those decisions started two years ago, or three years ago? Sort of when, what to do and the timing of it?
So, so Barbara, maybe, what was the...
Ultimately, my question is, and for further discussion is, if we want to think about how the districts can act more like one, I wonder where those decisions are made and why they're not the, the same in, in general? That's the broader sort of question I'm, I'm getting at, is, I thought it would be your decision as to say, this is what you need to do, but it's not.
Probably if we were, if we were truly one school district, I think that would be the case. But given that we're not, and Empowering Writers came in, you know, two years ago at Chicaring, I don't know if you want to explain, Barbara, a little bit of the thinking behind the engagement of the literacy consultants from the Pine Hill perspective? Do, when that, because that's also been two years in the making that we've had our consultants with us.
In veering a smidge from the school improvement plan, if our, our next steps are concretized for next year, next year you would see very similar, o, over next year and the following year, you would see very parallel curriculum improvement goals in science for both Chicaring and Pine Hill. And that is the work of our two superintendents. You know, we plan to bring in common professional development and write common curriculum. That hasn't historically been the culture, and we have been evolving. We, we are using the same program to meet our standards in mathematics across both schools. Our philosophies in reading and writing are similar. I believe Chicaring made some decisions about their writing program as I was arriving on the scenes, so I, I, I kind of have that information secondhand. But I believe they chose a bit of a more directed approach to teaching writing based on perception that they needed, perhaps it was an area of relative weakness for their school. It's certainly not an area of weakness, but relative to their overall performance. We felt strongly at Pine Hill that we want more authentic writing experiences for students, not contrived, you know, everyone's going to write about this theme this month, just didn't reconcile as well with our personal philosophy for instruction.
And it's true. Chicaring's writing score has definitely needed an infusion of, of attention. A couple of years ago, that's no surprise, and it was richly discussed at the school committee level, and they've been pleased with the results as a result of the Empowering Writers Program. Where we're linked up nicely is that we're sort of on the dawn of the, of new science standards that'll be coming out. So we're seeing this as a very unique opportunity now to bring the two elementary schools together, to have this curriculum writing that will be, in which will be engaged around science, to happen between the two buildings, literally, because we're on the cusp of being the recipients of new science standards. So it's very fitting that that should all happen now.
Okay. Thank you.
And an example, going back to the school improvement plan, an example of a benchmark that we are in the process of meeting and implementing around technology instruction, computer science instruction is an excellent example. We had a teacher representative from each grade level across Chicaring and Pine Hill and some other specialists integral to technology and library, work with some of our technology folks under Karen's leadership, and we will have a consistent computer science curriculum.
Technology literacy curriculum.
Technology literacy curriculum.
The computer science curriculum would be held, was, is Teresa Benami, who's your tech integrator, and Stephen Hart, the tech integrator at Chicaring.
And we're using a consistent approach to computer programming within that, within, across both of our technology specialists, which is, again, I think we've, we've been working toward the same vision, but we've been implementing in not necessarily consistent ways. So, so that's something that you'll see be tighter for the benefit of our students moving on as a cohesive cohort to middle school. So a lot, a lot of work has been done.
And that was actually richly discussed at the last two Dover School Committee meetings, because it was entwined in their fiscal sixteen budget, because the reality was that kids coming from Pine Hill were being exposed to a, a curriculum through Teresa Benami at Pine Hill, and as the students matriculated into sixth grade, it was a, there was a stark difference between students from Pine Hill having had exposure to these particular, to this curriculum, and the kids from Chicaring did not. So in an effort to make sure there was synthesis between the two elementary schools, so that students matriculating into sixth grade would in fact, there stands the sixth grade teacher to receive all these kids from Dover and Sherburne, and you want to talk about the quintessential differentiation. I mean, it was almost like, oh, okay, you guys are from Pine Hill, so you'll be working on this. You folks are from Chicaring, you'll be working on this. So what happened is the Dover School Committee had to have a discussion around administration before a proposal, that some of the phys ed, a lot of the kiddos at Chicaring have two sections of phys ed weekly, and in order to hit to those, hit those sci, the computer science standards, it had to come from somewhere. So part of that physical education had to fall out of that master schedule, which resulted in part of a cut of a phys ed position, in, in order to redefine the teaching, actual teaching responsibilities for the Teresa Benami equivalent, in Chicaring, his name is Steve Hart, in order to ensure the kids coming out of, that by the end of fifth grade, all students from Dover and Sherburne would have this experience, so as to provide a trajectory into sixth grade. They debated that for the past two Dover School Committee meetings, because they didn't, you know, none of us really want to give up anything. So no one wanted to give up that second section of phys ed, but something has to come from something, and that had to come from the second section of phys ed. So now we've come up with a hybrid. We had to redesign the whole master schedule, it was built into their budget, but ultimately and thankfully, we now have an assurance that kids K-5 will have the same experience. Otherwise, it's, it's, it's not an optimum situation at all. I mean, to have kids, you know?
Yep. Thank you.
So that, that's our progress in a nutshell, unless you have specific questions. I certainly could speak in more detail, but I want to be respectful of, of time and topics.
Thank you. Do we have any more update on the business manager search process, or?
No, I sort of embedded that up above.
All right. Next, in your packet, you have the lease for accept. Now, we already did the other one, didn't we?
No.
No?
The other one's been sent to tech.
Okay.
And I have the original, if the Sherburne School Committee sees fit to approve this lease with the accept collaborative, I have the original here for your signature, Mr. House. Well, you have in your packet is a copy of the lease.
And the monetary amount is the same?
Is $6,900 a year.
Are there any other differences from last year's lease?
Both collaboratives wanted more space, I will offer. Very much wanted more classroom space, but we really don't have the classroom space to, to offer at this point. So if one collaborative had said, oh, we're moving to here, there, or the other place, then we, we probably would have brought to you the, the suggestion that maybe tech could have two classrooms, or accept could have two, but neither collaborative seeks to leave, they love it. They love the space and love the people, and it's no wonder. It's great.
What's not to love?
What's not to love about Pine Hill?
Original windows from 1950.
The character of the building.
Yeah, the ambiance.
Someone like...
I make a motion that we accept the lease for the accept collaborative.
Second. Any of a discussion? All's in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Unanimous? Unanimous? Okay, and then school choice. This is what we vote on every year, right?
Annually, yeah. Every, every school committee across the Commonwealth is asked to vote every year on whether you would like to participate in school choice. Keeping in mind, this is only school choice receiving, which means by taking a vote to not participate in the program, you would be sending the message that, you know, students from outside of Sherborne could not attend Pine Hill for the school year. Do keep in mind that students from Sherborne or any municipality, any public school district can always exit the system. And they can in fact go to a district that is a receiving district. So that's the way school choice operates. And forever and always, our three school districts have voted not to participate in school choice for whatever reasons that they've decided to make that decision upon. But we have to bring this to you annually and then we have to file your vote with the Department of Education.
What's the monetary cost?
It's up now to, I think it's seven thousand dollars per student because of the amount of money.
Frank?
This, by voting not to accept school choice, that also then hinders a student from Dover to go to Pine Hill or from Pine.
Correct. It's a block, it's a block, right.
Now, if we were in one, if we were one school system.
Yes.
Then that would not be considered a block because you'd be one school system.
Right, if we were pure region at the elementary level, then, right. So it's, yeah.
How are the kids that might come here from another district and might be on an IEP, how is that handled monetarily?
So you provide the services and you can do a chargeback to the sending district. There is a mechanism for doing that. You cannot have, it has, school choice is supposed to be a blind process. So it's not as if you can say, please, you know, give us a package of applications, as it were, and we'll sort of pick through them. It's supposed to be a lottery system. So you're supposed to be blind to that is the way that that is supposed to run. You can elect to accept students in a particular grade level. My last district, obviously, not obviously, but it was a high school, and the school committee would recognize that, oh, we could have more students, say, in our freshman class. So the variable cost of having students, having a few extra students was negligible. So therefore, we will take kids into graduating class of fill-in-the-blank. And they would say, we would authorize, say, five seats in the class of, you know, two thousand and seventeen or something. And you can, you can be that restrictive, but in terms of who fills those seats, you can't be that restrictive.
Do you, so it seems like it would make sense to, at a certain, maybe not first or second grade because you have a certain amount of move-ins or you have increases in those grades. It's sort of unpredictable, so you don't know what your capacity is there. But it would seem to make sense, third, fourth, fifth, that it would make sense to accept those. But do you think that there would be a gap? Student coming in, third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade, from presumably it would be a neighboring town or not too far away, do you think that there would be some sort of a gap in terms of where they come in?
Could be, an achievement gap that would have to be, could be. But you know the bigger challenge for us, in all honesty, and this is what we struggled with in my last district? Because we were six, we were, we were five towns and six school committees. And that setup was, I know this is a K word, Mr. Gallow. It was an issue where if you accept kids in and then the secondary district does not participate, then think about if you're, if you were your own child, you might jump up and down. It's great if my kiddo can go to Pine Hill, but it might be very terminal in the sense that going to sixth, going to sixth grade, your kid might not be able to go to the region because the regional school committee may still vote not to participate. So as a family, you'd be making, it's quite a little risk. You're banking on a future decision of a future school committee in the way that we're set up.
Okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, so that's tough for families.
So who's voted on this so far? Did the region vote last?
The region voted last week and Dover has already voted too.
No?
No, they voted no.
Someone want to make a motion?
I make a motion that we do not vote, we do not, what's the word I'm looking for? That we vote for not accepting school choice.
Vote not to participate in school choice for the fifteen, sixteen school.
What he said.
Can I just read what's here? We can write it, it just says, it's already, oh.
I just butchered it, that's all.
Second, any discussion? Alls in favor? Opposed? Okay, unanimous. Okay, next on here is March enrollment. Are there any comments on the March enrollment?
Did you approve your minutes yet, Mr. Hoss?
Oh, excuse me, I'm sorry, I skipped over that. Let's look at our minutes. Consent agenda. Sherburne School Committee minutes of February tenth.
Do we move the agenda or the minutes specifically?
The minutes of February tenth, I'm sorry.
I move we approve the minutes from February tenth?
Second.
Any discussion? Alls in favor? Opposed? So now we're at a March enrollment. Any comments?
The Cliff Note version is since our last school committee meeting, we've had one, a family of one move out and a family of two move in.
If you could do that all year long, that'd be good.
Yes, because the best part is meeting them and inducting, inducting your family, so.
Okay, and so now we, since we have a review, we have the Dover minutes and the region minutes and so forth, but then we can, for items for April. And I'd like to float something by people here. Is that, you know, we have the capital budget committee meetings come up, there might be other subcommittee meetings. In the month of April, we have a joint meeting on the thirteenth, Sherburne the fourteenth, a joint meeting on the twenty-seventh, we have town meeting on the twenty-eighth. Okay, aside from whatever else you have. So I'd like you to consider for the April meeting is that we actually meet on the thirteenth, an hour before the joint meeting. That meeting meets at six-thirty. We can meet at five-thirty. If we didn't have a huge agenda, we could even cancel the meeting if necessary. But we could schedule a meeting for five-thirty on the thirteenth in the middle school library. And then that would cut out one meeting for all concerned, we just have a little longer one.
In terms of agenda items, do you have, is there going to be a lot?
We're pretty set on the capital. I think we're pretty set on a regular budget. That's gone first pass, we went before advisory. I mean, we still have the big hearing to go through. So sometimes at this time of year, we still have some hard decisions to make on the budget. Where this year, I think we're, we've done that hard work and I think we're ready to go forward. So I don't see a long list unless someone envisioned something.
Well, so if it's not a long list, could we maybe do a half-hour meeting and do it in the conference, the middle school headmaster's conference room so that we can actually go till six-thirty until people can come in?
I see what you mean. Go from six to six-thirty in the middle school conference room. Yeah, that makes sense.
Do you envision anything that would take longer than a half an hour?
Well, not really. But what I'll do though tomorrow is go back to last April's agenda. That's what we always do is go back a year to make sure there was no standing item that, you know, we need to get done.
Okay.
So we'll do that tomorrow. But absent of, and I'll send you a draft, Mr. Hoss.
Okay.
And absent of anything that comes up, we could do that, six to six-thirty, headmaster's conference room, middle school.
Okay. Does, do we want to vote on that tentatively or is that? I guess, I guess we don't.
No, we'll just change it.
Frank?
Pardon me?
I guess we did vote on all of our meeting dates at the beginning of the year, but do we need to vote to change it?
As long as we just notify, we'll make sure we notify the town hall immediately.
May I bring up a point regarding our May meeting?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Our May meeting is the first Tuesday of May, which happens to coincide with our elections. So first of all, we, A, would either have to move the the location of our meeting. But the bigger problem is, is that we would not have a full five-person school committee because the school committee term would end that on the, or either that or the new member wouldn't start until June and would miss the May meeting.
Right. Well, that's something.
So my proposal would be is that we chose a day later in that week.
Well, actually, it doesn't work a day later because that's the problem with May is the concert for Pine Hill and the middle school is the next day.
You said a day, that later that week, not necessarily the next day.
What are we talking about? I've got the twelfth is the.
Election day.
If I may refresh your memory, last year when there was a conflict, you met at Pine Hill and we made it a walkabout meeting.
Yeah, I think his point is that he wants to have the new person. I'm thinking that why couldn't we keep it the way, where it is? Love the walkabout. Can still have the outgoing person plus the, not necessarily yet, not yet elected, but probably will be incoming person participate anyway. If it's, if it's a walkabout and we're doing that, then, then there's closure and the beginning of the new.
Not a bad idea, but I think one of the things that might be different this year is if we have a thirty-minute April meeting, it may put more onto the May meeting and there might be some more issues that would have to be voted on for that May meeting.
Right, but.
That could be, that could be the issue for me.
Right, but actually, I think it might be good to have the experience that we have and that would be Susan's last meeting. So I sort of favor keeping it that day and moving it to Pine Hill so that, you know, we can have that experience. And Scott can be there, I mean, as he is at almost every meeting now. But then I think that we could have our reorganization and everything then for June meeting. But I mean, you know, it's up to this group.
We seem to have, we seem to have this problem. What dictates when the newly-elected school committee members start? Can we change that?
As soon as they're sworn in.
That's the vote, the election.
I understand that. But that, something somewhere says that they start serving right after they're elected.
Ten minutes past eight after they count the votes.
And that's state law, that, that dictates that?
No, but that, I don't know if it's state law, it probably is, but that's when the, the town clerk says that when they're sworn in afterwards, then you're an office.
Well, you know, we elected a new president, but he didn't start serving until, you know, two months later.
Well, no, but after he's sworn in, he starts right away. Meaning that as soon as you're sworn, they could be sworn in three days after and then start.
And here they're, now that they have that voting machine, they're usually by ten past eight. Votes are counted and Carol swears people in if they're here right after the election. I mean, they can give in the next day if they want to.
All right.
Yes. So it's, we have a discussion, we probably should.
But I agree though that you were saying, it doesn't make sense because it happens every year and Dover has the same issue, their election and their school committee meeting are the same. We don't seem to learn.
Your school committee hasn't turned over in a while? Like you haven't had a new person come on in a few years? So that's the only difference. But they used to, they had the meeting that night and it doesn't go typically go past eight.
We can get Susan to vote on all these cases.
So since we're having discussion, we probably should have a motion and a vote on something.
Well, I don't think we can change it until we have a date to change to. It's tough to find dates after that with concerts. Have to be that week or the next, beginning of next week because after that, it's all the graduation stuff.
Right, because it may start hitting bang, bang, bang almost every single night.
It's the beginning of the year, I think graduation is the beginning of the year. So is there anything Thursday night?
I would have to lie down for tomorrow.
Can we agree that we will look at it and see what the schedules look like and flow dates? Can we do that?
We could do that at the April.
At the April meeting, yeah, everybody comes in with dates, yeah, that's an idea.
All right, that's a good idea. So look at the April meeting. So on the April meeting, is there anything you want on our half-hour agenda? Yes, the May meeting.
And hopefully the Tech lease will be wrapped up for that meeting?
Yes, should be.
Okay. Any other business?
Move to adjourn.
Alls in favor? Thank you all.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoss, may I grab you a signature?